I hope this is according to the board rule. All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the public planning board meeting. We have one public hearing, nine items on the agenda, and three items on the business. It's kind of busy tonight. Public hearing is not, yes. They, oh, first of all, I mean, minutes for that primary. Anybody have anything on that?
If, if, motion to accept, if they appear good.
Motion to accept the minutes. And the second, law favor. It doesn't, so. Public hearing. Public hearing is to hear what people have to say. It's pertinent to the, to the item on the agenda. You don't have to be a neighbor. It's common. Um, I would ask that if you have something to say, and it's same as somebody said before, just acknowledge it. And the graphic is terrible, whatever. And you don't have to get up and explain the same thing. If you have more to add, that's great, but it's the same thing. We'll see if we can save a little time. Um, also, we're limiting our public hearing now, speaking, but you will have a chance to speak the second time. We want to make sure we hear from everybody, and we want to make sure we get through our agenda. So, uh, what we're going to do is we're going to have a presentation of what camp, um, that's been doing. Uh, you'll get a chance to ask questions, whether, make comments. And then we'll go to our part of the public, once the public hearing is over. What will happen is we have it on our agenda, so it's a separate item. If you're very interested in it, wait, because you will be coming up again. We won't be able to comment, but we'll be, uh, doing it as our item number three under all business. So the period is fine. Good evening. My name is Joel Cohen, representing campus meeting tonight. Campus meeting is an existing, uh,
summer camp on Civil Lake Road and Rosemont Roads. It's a ninety-two acre parcel in the Rexon district, which allows summer camps as a, uh, site plan to launch such improvements. Uh, this project has actually been approved in twenty twenty-two, but they didn't move forward, so the, the approval lapse, and now we're back with basically the same proposal, uh, adding three or five, three unit staff housing, a momentary building for sixty-four students. And there was some minor modifications, adding a rabbi's house and, uh, two decks, and a, and a new water buildings. This project being served by water on site, which has sufficient water, approved by E D O H, and they have sewer from the town. Basically, what this project is about.
I'm not sure at this point. Uh, anybody have a question or wants to speak on? Raise your hand, say your name, come up so we can hear you. Anybody? In case these.
Excuse me?
Other? You can speak.
Um.
The name, allow.
Ken Wagner.
We go ahead.
Um, first of all, I want to ask you if you're going to read the, it says that um, developments or houses aren't allowed to connect to the water or sewer. It's not guaranteed. That's number one. Just wondering, I didn't hear it, so maybe I'm just losing my ear. Don't you say that before every meeting?
Yes, sir. I, it's not the whole business. This means they've already heard it already.
Fine, okay.
But your, your point's well taken.
Okay.
As said, it's to say we're out of sewer water in certain areas, and even though it's development might get approval, can't go forward until we get such, and so everybody's aware of that.
And that is why I gave to the board members this docket, this, uh, thing from the Delaware River Basin Commission. It's really important that you get a chance to read this, and it has to do with the capacity of water that we have left for whatever developments or building that's going to happen in this town. And it would be a good idea if we went forward with this aquifer study, because it's comprehensive. There's been a lot of developments being built, and we don't know if it can be serviced properly. Nor do we know if it's going to affect other properties and their wells. So I'm asking for some consideration to see that the people who are already here don't get affected by what is coming. I'm not saying what they're doing is wrong. I'm saying if it has an impact on other people's properties and their water supply, then it seems to be unfair. And I'm just asking you to go to page nine, if you get a chance, you know, tell you that this aquifer study is supposed to be done by February of two thousand two, two thousand forty-five. And so I hope that you take this all into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um. Anybody else? Anybody online? Oh. Anyone yet? Well, the oral part of the public hearing will continue the written part until, uh, how do we finish the project? So if you have any, if you think of something you need to say, you send it in and it will be added to the record. That we totally can afford. Okay, all business. Two she votes. It's just conditional pool of site plan. They had to allow three stories, third story to the existing building, it approved for a story. That one, uh, I'm gonna go on top. And put some activity on that. We get, uh, we got thirty-nine of that one. Looks pretty. So, did you read the, uh?
I did read the two thirty-nine view. Um, so first of all, I want to hand out, uh, first time that the owner just rounded about the left comes into public hearing.
Thank you.
Which is about, uh, life and the voice. Hope that will be answered. What?
I could never be that in your whites. We appreciate the whole deal on that.
Thank you. Uh, with regards to the two thirty-nine of you, and I'm not sure, maybe that's a question to your attorney. Uh, this two thirty-nine of you have been submitted to the county in, on August twelfth, with the hope that we're going to get that comment for the September meeting, but we didn't get a comment until two days ago, which is way more than the thirty days that they are required to respond to. So I'm not sure. I mean, their point, again, their points, I'm not going to argue on the other points. Uh, we can go through the point that they have in the two thirty-nine of you, but, uh, what they're saying that it's incomplete. Um, again, this, this is more than thirty days. This is sixty, almost sixty days, and this was submitted to the county. Um. The, the county basically wanted to see like parking plan, how many parkings, and I just want to go quickly through that. We also have the owner, uh, Sam Lichten, he's online, should be Sam, so he can respond um, to any questions from the board. But with regards to parking space, uh, as it was discussed at the last meeting, there's twenty parking space on this property. Uh, he has a total of ninety-six seats. He would be required by twenty-four parking space. There is well over fifty parking spaces, uh, on this, on this property. So he has more than double than what, than what's required by the code. As he mentioned, uh, the last time, there are people from other businesses in the area who just park there. He's gentle enough and not, you know, sending them away. Maybe he has to do that if that becomes an issue. But with, with regards to parking, he has more than double the amount of parking that's required by code. Uh, the building act is going to be less than the, less than what's, uh, less than the maximum allowed by building code and lighting. As stated in the letter, uh, all the lights will be turned off every night at, uh, when they close at eleven P M. And the lights in the parking lot, which at one and a half was for security, will be all dark sky compliant lighting. So that's, that's basically different from what they wanted last time. Last time, they wanted to keep those bulbs, light bulbs on, so he's not committing to, uh, turn that off every night and just see the, the parking lots, the parking lot lights on, you know, being dark stacked and black lighting. Um, D U T had a comment about a sign, there's a sign which looks like more like a temporary sign that is on the D U T's right away, that will be removed. Um, and again, this project is the this owner came in here about ten years ago, came before the, the board for approval, I think in two thousand fifteen or sixteen, and he did, uh, the curb on the side of the road with a grass. Uh, he's the only one that kind of had kind of a sidewalk uh, or a place to walk in front of the business without being obstructed, perhaps. I'm done.
Uh, we had some questions about the space and the structure. Did you get any examples then?
Yeah, so I raised the architecture, the one who designed the original, not the original building, the second story. Uh, he's, he's actually, we prepared an elevation view for this building, and as I discussed last time, uh, he will be submitting the full building plan, showing the structure and everything that is supportive enough for for the third story.
And you can, this is an, an engineering art project, correct?
Right.
Hmm. And that, sure. And they inspected the footings, and that was originally built as an ice cream place, one story. Um, summer use, no weight, whatever.
Hmm.
And they've been, I don't, I'm not an engineer, but it seems to me that putting three stories on what was the footing underground without examining it.
And of course, uh, I'm not sure if he examined it yet or not, but of course, this will have to be examined by him. Um, being that he's going to sign up on a building plan, adding another story. I mean, that's, that is typical standard practice that an architect or an engineer would do when they propose to add another story to a building.
Um. Okay. I mentioned my last time about the sprinkler system, the designs for, because you have, you're got a third floor with living floor.
Hmm.
You have a plan saving how, um, that the ingress and outgress of, um, to get in and out. What, what the story is with, with that, and what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to figure out is number one, is there going to be an outside entrance going to the third floor? Or because that building is so small that if you make a compliance staircase, um, there might be no room left. I, I don't know. If I, if I see a plan, I can visualize better and figure out what's the best for the safety of the firemen and the safety of the, the people that are going to be living above, uh, the restaurant.
So, uh, I, I really appreciate that comment. I mean, safety is something that I don't want to compromise for. Uh, but, I mean, this matters, the really building department matters. I mean, the sprinkler systems will be discussed in the building plans and that, uh, but to your point, the layout, uh, have been worked on. There will be a, a fire rated stairway that will take the people down from the upstairs to the downstairs, out to the street. They won't go through the restaurant, won't go through the kitchen. It's going to be straight down the door to the extended.
I think what we need is to be, uh, a plan of the, the layout of the building, but the of everything, potentially.
You want to see a floor plan?
A floor plan. And I understand about them building to the standards. That is a commercial building that needs a commercial sprinkler system and, uh, alarm system. And these are the things that I don't want to wait for the last minute, and then they say, well, I'm, I want to see it ahead of time before you approve.
So, okay, I get it. You want to see a floor plan, but again, I mean, this, it's there's a little, it's a little premature to have a full building plan, which will show all the plans. This is not typically done when, in the, in the planning work stage. Uh, and for whatever reason, I'm not going to, but.
Can plan natural order.
But, yeah, so what I'm saying is, in, in order to show all compliance with state building code, whether it's sprinkler systems or alarm systems or fire ratings, I mean, this building really needs to be designed and completed. What I, what I'm saying is this building will be designed according to New York State Building Code, and if the town wants something that exceeds New York State Building Code, they would have to get special permission from the Department of State. The town cannot impose stricter restrictions on the building.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not strict or.
That's what, what I'm saying. So the building plans will be reviewed by the building department, which they won't issue a building permit if I say, oh, there's no way I can put in a sprinkler system. Oh, there's no way I can put in a staircase. If, if there is no way, then there's no building permits by that. When I'm submitting a building permit application on a building plans, those have to be looked at, and a permit is not being issued unless it's a full compliance with the state building code or if you have a variance from the New York State Department of State.
If I may ask a question?
Go ahead.
You're asking us to vote on something we don't see.
You, this is for site plan approval.
Right?
This is why they are here, not for the building. It's for the site plan of the, that was.
How typically we look at it in terms?
Right, and, and you like to see the elevation views, which was shown to you last, at the last meeting, um, so we have that.
Uh, I'm, I have a question that I don't know how to answer. I have many questions that I don't know how to answer. In the case, if you've ever had a two thirty-nine, a county review come back, it's like, I don't know what we do. If, we can, if they came back with a negative, we can override. If they came back with positive, it means go right ahead. They came back with nothing. They came down with.
They came back actually with both. They came back with positive, that, uh, additional housing and support for local business will enhance, handle centers by increasing blah, 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 blah. But then they say it's incomplete. So technically, I believe you can vote if it's an incomplete, and that's why I started to say that this is this is now sixty days when they came back with. I mean, we were, we really wanted to have this voted on at the last meeting, but a public hearing wasn't the end of the meeting, not the beginning of the meeting. And, you know, this is kind of.
That's, I just went through my notes, and two thirty-nine was supposed to go out in August. I.
It did go out in August.
Did go out, so I mean, basically, if it thirty days passed, that's a, means that they're just not saying anything typically. So that would be, once you hit day thirty-one, that's as if they gave just a local determination decision. So you don't have to override anything, but if there's anything in the two thirty-nine that you think makes sense as far as conditions, then you're certainly, you know, it'd be acceptable to, you know, discuss those and approval.
And that, that, that's what I said at, to begin with. I mean, the points that they make, I'm not going to argue, oh, those are not any valid points. I mean, those are still points that we address.
Well, there's comments about the parking. There isn't an increase in parking taking place. We're going to have one apartment more.
Right.
The parking is an effect, it is, it is there, and it's a working operation.
There is, there, it, it, we have more parking than once required. Like I said, we have more than double.
Uh. You, you commented about the lighting and so on.
Yes.
Um. We don't, this is, this is site plan. We don't, it's not a special use permit. So we don't have ability to dictate. You made comments about what you're going to do. Uh, can you get that in writing?
About what I said about the, that's, that's what that one is, not just good.
It's the one that you can hear.
Can't look in, but then I didn't expect you to just hear him shortly.
So on the sun, for the, the lighting and the noise, especially they associated with the outdoor cafe at all.
What am I going to say?
So they have that outdoor seating or no?
They have outdoor seating in the eye.
Gotcha. So that's a special permit use. So if you couldn't, and it's up to Dylan, if you can justify that the lighting and the noise concerns are attached to the outdoor.
I don't agree when we approved in the first place, it was outdoor seating included, you know. Move it.
But there was something that was added on.
It was added on later with it, without any, uh, something. Doing, what are you saying?
Saying, I mean, we can ask Dylan whether he thinks that the planning board has an opportunity to attach conditions to a special permit specific to the outdoor seating, because that is a special permit use in that zone. The restaurant is permitted, but the outdoor cafe is a special permit.
It's their, uh, special permit for the outdoor seating that currently exists.
They never applied for anything. They just go to.
We never, sorry for interrupting. We never added more seating. We only have outdoor. There's no indoor. That's the seating that we always had since day one. That was in the original rendering, the original plans.
That was in the site plan then.
Yeah.
It was, they never had the noise, it was always another.
Correct.
Okay, yes. I mean, if there, if there's no existing special permit, then we certainly can attach it, but I mean, my, my thought would be more a site plan condition. Can we in the letter and just say that as a condition, the, uh, promises or, you know, items mentioned here by the applicant are to be complied with, um, you know, as confirmed, you know, quoting the Bushman officer. I mean, I think that would be a fair condition, and if the applicant's willing to accept that, then we wouldn't need a special permit use anyway.
Yeah, can I ask a question? If we go ahead with that, and, um, can we do it for like a probation for a year so that they, um?
Not, not a type, but we're done with it.
Yeah.
Either approved or not.
That'd be special permit. We'd be able to do a, a reopen or like that. We wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, let me read a part of the letter that we got. We got several letters complaining about the noise. And, uh, like they added, that we all know what people think they're dealing with. Well, I've long been a fan of sushi. I was so dismayed that they showed no consideration or regard for their neighbors. I live across the lake and lightly treated not only to their very loud music, but also to a plethora of light all along the premises. Additionally, and importantly, I know that there are many hours of loud music that's disturbing for the ecology and the animals in the area, et cetera, et cetera. But then we, we got several letters about the noise and so on. So it's, here is an issue. And unfortunately, unless we have a permit or site plan, we can't do that.
And, uh.
Except the letter, the, the consequences. Unless the code force can deal with it.
And he did, I needed to commit on, about the noise in this letter as well.
Yes.
So. He mentioned, you, you referred to the noise and to the light, noise and lighting complaints.
That's correct, and we had, uh, two, maybe three comments on that. Tell us a suggestion what to do.
I'm sorry. Technically, I don't think I'm even engaged on this one, though. Because I might come on it, buddy, like shit. It was supposed to be a very easy, straightforward, and, you know. Uh, what do you want?
I want to know what the hell to do.
I mean, there is a noise ordinance.
There is a noise, noise ordinance, which sometimes actually enforced.
And that noise loading ends at ten o'clock, period. Yeah, not eleven, period.
Well, also, the speakers outside, the internal speakers are not permitted.
Sam?
Yes.
Where, where is the music coming from?
The music, um, there was twice this year that a camp came and they put on their own speakers, so it could have been louder than we realized, but we'll definitely enforce it. And, um, we'll make sure there's no loud speakers. I think that will solve the issue.
Okay.
Mr. Kim, indicate here, eleven P M. This.
Right, we do it now, it's like.
And that's the business hours.
You know, you have to stop the, it's the rules are, you have to stop the title of the music.
We'll make sure after ten, there's no music. That's no problem.
Um. Do we want a resolution written on this one? We have detail. What, what is the consensus of the board? What do you want to do? We can approve it given that they, they responded to everything. I'm, I'm a little not happy with the, uh, structural area. So we can make it, make signature pending structural engineering report.
You want a separate report, separate from the architect? You want a structural engineer to write a letter saying that, you know, either the building will support a third story or, you know.
One needs to be done, I'm sure.
Right, one needs to be done to.
There's also something, I think, a comment about structural to looking at the electric, on the electric service.
Oh, yeah.
Into the building, just some, some.
There was a question about how it was supposed to be used for the wire in front of.
We upgraded to four hundred amps, so it should be fine.
No, no, the primary line is low. Once you put your third story on, and I did contact Nizek to look at it, yep.
Thank you.
And that's okay.
That they're going to make sure it's okay. They'll raise it if it's not.
Okay, so if we.
Can we get a letter from Nizek?
I would make, make that a condition of approval, just a letter from Nizek.
I mean, a letter from Nizek, it takes two years sometimes.
I'll ask.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the letter, and it could be. So the item came from electrical building, wired.
Just so.
The structural engineers report.
And adherence to the, you know, referencing the letter as far as adherence to the lighting and noise.
Yeah, the downshining.
Addition of the letter to the record from the afternoon. Okay, so uh, I would suggest that we, at this point, pass it. Site plan approval with the various additions and the report from the structural engineer, the letter included the, uh, about the sound and light. Nice egg report, or the letter from Nizek clearing the building. Very other condition you would add to that.
Uh, you had this signature pending structural engineering report.
Right, I have that.
With the, uh.
And Nizek report was commenting on the, and the letter was fudging to lighting and, you know, sound. Do you think of anything else?
Um, that's all I have. I think Jen just mentioned that the, uh, public hearing technically still is open as far as the.
And just before we. Yep.
Hello.
Okay.
I mean.
Only the written was open. How long, Jen? Well, they're closing it right now.
Closing right now. Open for the last, since the last meeting. We're typically, right now, we're doing public hearings, we're leaving the written part open until we come to the final meeting on. So I'm going to ask for motion to postpone public hearing.
Where the motion?
Go to the second.
Okay.
I'm second to that.
Okay. All favor. Any guess? Okay, public hearing is closed. We have to do. Now, the next thing is the motion for site plan approval with, with the various items that were stated as part of the condition.
Uh, ours do need to do a negative deck.
We can do that either, huh? That was a prior existing. So is it a type two?
How big is the, uh?
What was the potential speed? I don't do it.
So I'm, um, looking up, you know.
It's like, so. Second, four thousand.
I think this year.
Three or four thousand.
Four thousand, yeah. So assuming you're under that, it should be the type two.
Type two, we don't need to do any.
Unless there was anything specific that, you know, came up that would direct it outside of that, but I, I would say.
Nothing, uh. But you can do a next deck. We're due to do a next deck anyway. Yeah.
Trying to avoid that. Okay, notice that we're negative decked, but first to change, uh, lead agency status, unlisted action. You pushed it?
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second. Well, second law favor. Any guess? Guys, I have, that's our, stuff in the negative deck. We've been saying that, look, there's no environmental change taking place here. And they're, they're staying within the building envelope. So a negative deck would be in order, negative declaration is significant. And our motion for a negative deck?
Yeah, did I make it?
No, we made the motion to.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Make the motion for the deck.
And second, what was the second law favor? Any guess? That's how it's now. Finally, site plan approval pending several issues which have been looked at already. So a motion for site plan approval. Somebody, we don't have.
Right, I'll make the motion.
The only guy awake. Five seconds. Ball's second. Um, ball, ball favor.
Fine. Mr. Kim, you want to make a note in the minutes? Can't vote.
Right, you, 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 you say a person, we have.
I can speak, but I can't vote.
Right. You guys, Gary's having a meeting. Um. So, the motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All right, all favor. Any again? Done.
Thank you. I'll pull together a, just formal resume.
If, if you would, tell you, we have it in the record. And both counties are two minutes out of shape.
Should respond in time, like that's, uh, now I'm not talking.
Is it spared? Is there a time stamp on the paperwork that you get from the county?
Yeah. I emailed it to them, so I have the email when I sent it. We emailed back, but you know, when they emailed it back.
Okay, let's go on to Irvington State. All right, now, make sure it's twelve point five eight. Top Fallsburg. You have a resolution for that one?
Yes.
And I think we'll remember shot and have a chance to read it.
All right, so we have preliminary subdivision plat resolution. Got a subdivision, uh, the application is received January twenty sixth of twenty twenty two on regards to five parcels. We call that the project for residential development of three parcels totaling twelve point five six acres on five thirty fifty three eighty nine, New York State and forty two. SPL's fifty six, that one that eight point one, eight and thirteen point one. It's in a residential zoning district. And they're looking at creating four half acre parcels for single family homes, which is gonna retain the ten point five six acres um, for a multifamily development.
So there's two. There's uh, there's one change from the original, original was gonna be four full family home lots, which should have a new resolution. That was changed only recently.
And just to be clear, for the record, we talked about this the last time, that it's it's basically two separate actions, the subdivision is the only thing that we're entertaining tonight, the actual, as you said, multifamily development on the remaining particle, that would be subject to its own separate review, so that's not being approved or discussed, it's just a subdivision.
Just subdivision changing the lot lines to create the lots. So there was a short environmental impact um, statement in January twenty six twenty two. Assessment form, sorry. Uh, planning board declared its intent to be lead agency on July fourteenth of twenty twenty two. It was determined that project was an unlisted action. Planning board reviewed parts two and three of the S A, S E A F. And on September twelfth, twenty twenty four, determined and resolved that it was an unlisted action under seeker. There was a public hearing that was noticed on July fourteenth of twenty twenty two, which provided public input. Um, so ultimately, we have the typical standard conditions being adherence to any and all changes requested by planning board members, town falls for staff, and planning board attorney, engineer, planner, other technical consultants, document document all mitigation measures referred to in the environmental assessment form and negative declaration that's adopted by the planning board on the preliminary plat. Payment of all fees in accordance with the town fee schedule. Prepare draft easements, deeds and or offers of dedication of land or easements to the town for roads, utilities, et cetera, that may be shown on the plans or is determined to be necessary by the town engineer and or the town superintendent sideways. With submittal to the planning board attorney for review prior to final plat approval, submittal to the final subdivision plat and substantial performance with the preliminary plat within six months of the preliminary plat approval. Final plat is not submitted within six months, preliminary plat approval may be revoked. Site specific, we have project engineer and town engineer shall meet to review site drainage issues or maps or sign. And the town attorney or town engineer, trying to make myself an engineer here, shall make the final determination on whether draining issues have been mitigated, I know there's been some meetings on that, so that's.
I don't like talking that about, if you want me for a minute. Um, so we we didn't have a me, we didn't have a meeting with the project engineer, with the town engineer, and the urban department, water department, sewer. Um, so.
Site plan.
What? For the for the subdivision, for that specific drainage issue, and that was discussed and to be taken care of. Uh, as part of the subdivision, we'll show whatever drainage, what it needs to be redone.
So, can you explain that a little bit, because there was a neighbor here that was concerned about the the drainage, you know, sort of.
So there was two uh, places identified that the applicant would add vulgar pipes, um, because the road was cut in a long time ago, it's a town, you know, it's town property now. The applicant will pay to, um, you know, get that road to town standard with face and material and pavement drainage. Um, then the town would then maintain that one piece of complete. Um, so those were identified, the plans have now come back and if that shown yet. You didn't submit yet.
No, I am. We are, we have a set of plans that show that exactly what you're referring to now, if it's fine here, and it's forward, and another problem.
We didn't get them, no, okay. Um, so that would be a part of our review, make sure that the condition was met. Um. And that was.
Engineering report.
Uh huh.
Engineering.
I was there. Um, the easement, they can't, you know, it's not gonna be widened, the road stays the same. Um, and it doesn't connect to any of the other, you know, roads, it's still a dead end with just two lots on the left side.
So you.
No, yeah, it won't be, well. The plans, once they're shown on the plans, will get signed, but
In your opinion.
They won't be able to build until they I mean, I guess that could be a condition before building permits are added, they have to improve the road. Um, I mean, I guess you don't want them to have to, you know, top the road before they build you know, the houses with the construction trap, so if you want that in part of the conditions, if they have to, you know, improve the road drainage before they get building permits, that might be a.
That would, that sounds real good.
Would that be in site plan? I think we save that.
I know it's just a subdivision, so there is no site plan for this.
No building until everything is to the satisfaction of the town.
No building permits issued until that site visit takes place and the engineer signs off that the drainage.
What I found from the future is, they say they're gonna do something, and if they don't abide by what they're told, and all of a sudden it changes, and there's a problem, and then it's pushed to the town and they got their hands up like, well, no.
Building permits should get even better.
Okay, as long as they can do that, or they put up a bond.
That's a condition that uh, to have taken care of, there'll be no building permits.
But that's one of the things that I see happening, and it's not followed through, so no building permits, and so everything is done to the town, engineers. Specs.
So was there ever a vote on a negative deck? This one there was at the last meeting on the twelfth of September, um, there is two additional site specific conditions, just run through those quick. The applicant must include in deeds after subdivision that the wetlands are not to be disturbed. And if any road, driveways, or turnarounds are planned, and such items must meet town falls for road specifications and be approved by the town engineer. Parts of destruction.
Okay, that's a resolution.
So this is just for the subdivision, so does um, a new public hearing have to be held after negatives determined? At sixty two days. For subdivision. Well, this is just the subdivision, so.
You can do that before a site plan.
Yeah, for site plan, there would be a separate public hearing.
He can do an option, it's our option whether we do it or not.
Yeah, so you can do one on that front, that would just be its own separate public hearing.
And let's get done with subdivision, and then most of the, most of the problems, one decision. All right. Uh, in that case, we have we entertain a motion for subdivision approval with those conditions, we'll have a motion.
Yeah, oh, good.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any against? You have it.
Okay, thanks.
That's kind of fun. Amazing.
There's no public hearing tonight, Gary. It'll be on the site plan.
Yeah, we have a public hearing.
It happened, I wasn't involved, I wasn't involved, and I would like the opportunity. And.
There's a whole procedure coming on in the region. That's for the site plan, and if you're not notified, it won't be valid. It's coming here within five hundred feet of property line.
The only residential house on that block, Arthur.
How close are you?
He would be noted. One parcel's right next to me, one parcel directly across from me. My my mother and my uncle and myself, we've been here for forty years.
Right, then, it will be before anything is approved as far as site plan, and it will be a public hearing. This is just a move to property line. Not to make a building. And if you're not notified, it will not be valid.
But the subdivision does pave the way if the applicant, you know, if they sell those lots, people could build homes on those lots on this river.
You understand that, it could already applied for the uh, site plan. So somebody going ahead with site plan next.
I think there's a little confusion there.
Yeah, let's let's clarify this and say they're gonna straighten everything out.
So I mean, I think this is.
We haven't.
We didn't have, we didn't have a public, we didn't have a public meeting of this.
Yeah, and the only house on the block has a notification. And why wouldn't? Anything to mouth. My uncle received notification in the mail, and my mom received notification in the mail.
You gotta calm down. This isn't a public hearing.
He's calm.
I'm calm, you're leaving.
Well, this is, this is gonna back and forth, so stop talking if you're calm.
Yeah, this is my residency to talk to you on.
All right, we have.
That's not.
I have, wait a minute, we we have a question on this. We have the public hearing.
You were notified.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
I remember him speaking, you weren't, in twenty twenty two when the public hearing was held, so now.
What was the date of public hearing?
Project is where's the reference?
July fourth.
Right, the project hasn't changed since.
They actually, they reduced.
Twenty fourteen.
It's actually reduced.
Okay, so we we did have it, you did have the opportunity. Before they do site plan, they will have to send out if if you do have a site plan coming.
They're not.
So this is a, this is a subdivision, they don't need a site plan.
I understand that. If the next stage is a site plan, I'm saying. Then there will be notification again, and a public hearing again. That's the next one, next step.
For the duplex, you know.
Right.
Right, there's no site plan for it, if somebody wants, after that, after those lots are subdivided. Wants to go to the building department and full building permits.
They can, they can do it. But we've already, we also went over the thing. The thing is, if we had this uh, public hearing, and there was no notice, and the and the whole procedure is endowed, we have evidence that the the public hearing was leaving, uh, notice was given.
Uh huh.
So you don't have a recourse. Still saying project.
Still saying, actually, the project was reduced, I don't know if we wanted to respond to, but it makes us very, you were down there while we were out there with the town engineer, with the urban department, the whole group. And concerned with the mother drainage, and uh, concerned about noise in construction, which is just gonna be temporarily. Uh, the drainage issues being, is actually, it's actually gonna help. It's actually, it's actually gonna help, uh, the drainage will actually help his current situation, it'll be much better after.
If if they come in for a site plan, you will be notified again.
Thank you, Arthur.
Okay.
I'll try to the board.
We appreciate your concern.
It's it's a little emotional, because it is my family's problem.
Haven't done well. All right, next item. Next item might not be as simple.
Maybe it's simple, your mind.
Yeah.
Yes, we have full of the site plan previously approved, we have raised the problems.
Yes. We can approve it, but we can't do it.
Uh, I don't think we can approve it.
Well, first of all, the previous site plan has expired, so we're basically starting on starting off from scratch as a, or a brand new project. Um, and if you want me to explain?
Yeah, please do.
So when the project was approved in in twenty twenty two, um, we did not have the benefit of the capacity um, study that the town did for the Mountaindale wastewater treatment plant that was done the year, you know, the year after. Um, based on some research that the building department did, I don't know if anybody remembers when the Camp Silver Lake, when the Silver Lake Dam failed. This, at one point, was Camp Silver Lake, and the town board agreed to let them hook up into the Mountaindale sewer as sort of an emergency action, because they couldn't, they could no longer discharge their onsite sewer system into the lake because the lake had dried up. So the agreements that were in place back in nineteen ninety nine appear, you know, to have some questions about whether they are still valid. Um, it it was supposedly only valid for ten years, it was limited to thirty thousand gallons a day, um, this proposed project would generate um, theoretically more than that, a thousand gallons a day. So at this point, based on the conversation with Dylan, the the only thing that we can really do is refer it to the town board and the town attorney to make a determination as to whether that sewer agreement, because they're an outside user, they're not in the Mountaindale sewer district, it was a special arrangement that was made for this one property. Um, the town board will have to kind of sort out what they want to do about that sewer agreement.
You can't go ahead without.
No, we would just recommend that the the board just refer it to the town board to look into the agreement, and then they give you an answer once they come to an inclusion on that.
Jen, if you can put together a letter.
Sure. Send that from that board.
I did that.
Send it to myself. Joel, you don't have any other information, like there wasn't another agreement that you're aware of that superseded that one?
No, I saw your memo, I actually had a copy of that agreement, I mean, I could do a sample for it as well.
Right, gotcha.
Um, but um, yeah, I accept it, it's simple, which is moving forward.
Okay, let's get to that.
That's.
Say this to the next one. Four point square. Uh. What you're trying to do is, we're trying to determine the parking necessity. On this. This is a three story building in the municipal fundland. All four. It's, there we have seventy thousand square foot, we're raised on the one, retail, one floor retail. Uh, one floor walk-in system, and a bathroom floor having a parking space, ten thousand square foot. For three stories. And right at the moment, the biggest dealer is parking for.
Use.
And he uses.
So um.
There's parking just.
That's not what you thought of. That actually, that space, that space. That has to be.
It's gonna be, yeah. We missed that one thing, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, this this is actually an updated one. Uh, because there was some back and forth with the town traffic engineer afterwards. So just just to go briefly through it. Uh, anyone against? So originally, when this, when this project came from the boards, originally, the last one, when the last one, when we appeared in front of the board, this project had a hundred and ninety seven parking spaces. So we had a traffic or a parking assessment done, and then we had a work session subsequent to that with a town consultants. And uh, there were some questions raised if that will be enough parking spots or not. Uh, after that, we uh, found another two uh, twenty three parking spots, and now we have a total of two hundred twenty parking spots on the site. And we also have space for six buses to park, there should be buses coming to the site. There there will be placed for the buses to stay in the side of the road until they pick up the agents. Uh, also, we've discussed the, at that work session, the possibility of in case there will be some sort of a larger event, then they will have an agreement with the parking area of all sites and have utilized that parking area and bus people, which we don't see that happening really, but just in case they are working on setting up such an agreement. Uh, Jen gave me some contact information from the Fallsburg School District um, to try to see if we can work it down with them, because they have. Um, to try to see if we can work it down with them, because they have the. School, which is typically not a user in the summer. And that can help out in parking situations, if there's a larger event.
Yeah, so the, so the issue here is that the. Applicant wants to maximize the amount of, of retail space. But the more retail states you have, the more parking is required, so right now, the plan that they have before the planning board. Um, you know, is basically requesting a, a waiver to reduce the parking requirements on, you know, the basis that the different users will be. Sharing parking at, at different times. Um, the problem that we have, which we had from the beginning, um, is the whole idea of how to define, I don't think anybody has an issue with the. Parking for the retail, the parking for the office, that's all very straightforward, and that's very clear in the zoning code. How much parking is required first for, for those two uses? It's the flex event space that I think is, uh, causing a lot of consternation and, um, confusion. Um, we established at the work session that the primary use was a shopping center, that seemed to very clearly fit the definition in the zoning code. But as far as the flex space of the, as a quote-unquote accessory use. It's not defined anywhere in the zoning code in a way that really, um, sort of fits. So one of the things that we, we talked about, you know, sort of subsequent to the work session, is whether or not it makes sense. Um, to refer it to the ZBA to, for an interpretation, because you, you guys can't. Necessarily make a decision on waiving the parking requirements until you know exactly. What the parking requirement is, and the code is all over the place, there's two different standards for quote-unquote public assembly. One is one space per five, the other is one space per three. Um, there are uses in the zoning code that are similar, um, sort of catering, you know, all. Um, you know, and, and other things, they have different parking requirements, so. One of the things that we'd like to throw out there is whether or not you feel like it should go to the ZBA for an interpretation. Or if you wanna sort of accept, uh, that the flex event space, you know, would be considered a public assembly and would be the buy seats.
You typically don't know. The pub space can be anything.
That's an open-ended question, and the determination of what it is. You don't know, is it gonna be for weddings, or is it gonna be some kind of venues or parties?
Conference.
Conference, you know what I mean, a flex space. I, I think what you need is to figure out exactly what it's gonna be used for. And then you, you know, okay, you use it if it is, this is what you need.
But we also have the issue with dual use. Are you going to. Agree not to have anything in that truck space during regular hours? In other words, before, or six o'clock? If you're going to have anything in the afternoon, and you can't do these places. Because we're gonna be using them already. And, and so that's an issue. Also, I think you could. I'd like to have a list, and I know you can't do it, but what retail are you putting in there? Which is maybe a grocery store.
You didn't, in this letter, they didn't break it down more than.
Yeah, this look.
Right. I think there's a fundamental question as to whether or not the flex event space, they do them an allowable.
Right.
Right, that's the first issue, because it doesn't fit anywhere within the existing definitions in the zoning code, the closest thing that fits. Is either a banquet facility or a conference center, at least based on what we've heard so far. And neither of those are committed uses, you know, in that zone, so it's, it would be up to the ZBA to sort of make a determination based on the proposed use. You know, how it fits into the zoning code, if it more closely, you know, relates to those uses, then a use variance would be required, I mean, a lot is. Right.
There's no limit on that.
You can't have an open end, you, you gotta, you gotta more or less to figure out what you're doing, because they'll go to the zoning board. And they're gonna have the same thing we're doing, where, where our hands are up, we, you know, I think it needs to be derived. What is the usage?
Yeah, I, I understand, uh, the concerns of the board, they wanna make sure that there's enough parking for the facility, and that the use is allowed, uh, in the zoning. Again, flex event space is such that, the flex event space, yes, it's kind of open-ended.
Any use you can imagine.
It's, it's kind of, not any use that you can imagine, it's kind of, it's kind of somewhat open-ended, you can have different type of venues. Uh, but mostly, I mean, the, these type of events that they envisioned would be mostly in the evening. Um, and even if all the parking will be needed, uh. If it's hundred percent retail, hundred percent over space, hundred percent, uh, flex space, if that is all. Being used hundred percent at the same time, it will be two hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces, but we don't see that all being done in the same time.
Can we get an email or a letter from the, the person that's building this? Of what he wants to use of that, and why we can break it down as a type order?
I mean, I, I.
What do you think?
I would feel more comfortable if it were put in writing, you know, as a formal submission, this is, this is what, how we intend to use the space. And have the ZBA make a determination, as, you know, based on that, and they, they determine whether it fits into an existing use, if it's. Public assembly, you know, what, whatever.
The hour.
No, I think it would, I mean, Dylan, can you explain kind of the, the role of the ZBA when there's a question about interpreting the meaning behind the, you know, the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, first, I would refer it to the code enforcement officer first to make a determination, and then depending on what the determination is, then it can be appealed to the ZBA. I would do that first and foremost, but. If it, you're looking for a determination from the ZBA or code enforcement officer, basically you're saying, there's a gray area here. Planning board doesn't have the authority in which to make a determination, that's really outside the mandate of the board, so the only two. Folks that could do that would be the ZBA or the code enforcement officer to say, this is what it is specifically, if there's a question as to. How to, what hats to put on.
That's the first, okay. The second one is defining what we've got. Um, retail, as I said. Leaving it an open-ended retail means you can have a grocery. As an example of, of a heavy usage. Or you could say you'll never have it.
They. So we actually, we actually, yes, so, so the traffic assessment and park assessment actually provides to include the supermarkets, so if they wanna have a supermarket, that, that actually takes that into account.
It's in this letter.
Yeah.
It's, it's, this is both in this letter and in the previous one, not in the original one.
They write that square, but it's for each.
Correct, yes, so it's all in it.
But we need to take it one step at a time.
Yes, first thing we have to do, we have, it's not a use. So I guess.
That was the use, then from the use flows the. Parking requirement, and then you'll be able to determine whether or not there's not parking, you know, uh, with shared uses to justify issuance of a waiver.
We can sometimes let them have less, right, we have that. Occasion into it, right?
Well, usually it's like, you give a waiver if. You have a community buildings, all the people in the community are using it, so they don't need the extra spaces, because they already have their cars at their house.
Okay, so it's not for something like this, then?
I'm not saying it hasn't been done, but.
I mean, also, also the code, the code is not specific to each, uh, specific kind of use. Uh, well, the parking assessment letter, that basically splits all the uses for this project, and based on IT. Uh, standards and other local standards, they apply whatever parking requirements, or they see fit for this project.
So when, when the Galleria Mall was built, that was in the eighties. That parking lot, as you see, is way bigger than it's ever used, because then they required you to build for Christmas Day, the highest ever, yeah. Now, when they're built, it's the, the, the average, the max daily average, like, you know, it's. Friday peak, not, not Christmas peak, so that's, that's been changed to, to reduce those large parking areas, but that's what the traffic consultant has been going back and forth on. To.
There was a motion, uh, some discussion, uh, by, by, that, uh. They, they use an urban model instead of a rural model.
It's vault, potentially.
It's maybe not.
They're using vault.
Right, let me just read for a, a second what the code says, um, that kind of gives you the authority to. Waive and reduce the parking requirements in this particular instance. When any lot contains two or more uses having different parking requirements. The parking requirements for each use shall apply to the extent of that use. Where it can be conclusively demonstrated that one or more such uses will be generating a demand for parking. Uh, spaces primarily during periods when the other use or uses are not in operation. The planning board may reduce the total parking spaces required, but in no case below release requirement, so that's basically what Joel. You know, that's the first thing that they need to establish, right, because.
The lease.
The parking drives, you know, the, the layout of the site, they can't fit. X amount of retail, if you're requiring them to have three hundred parking spaces, which is what, right now. Our assumption is that three hundred parking spaces are required, they're providing two hundred and twenty. But we have to straighten out the use of the flex space first, before we can determine whether or not, you know, a, a waiver is, is warranted.
Well, the least would be the retail at, uh, a hundred and seventy-five spaces, so they do provide more than the least. To be fair.
Yeah, thank you.
What about during the winter when we have a two-and-a-half-foot snowstorm? What's, what's, what, what you gonna put this on?
Well, that, that's a site plan issue, again, we gotta take these, these one at a time, right? And we're just in the concept.
I think, I think, I mean, that's a very easy answer, even if they're open during the year, year round. You understand that in the, in the wintertime, you won't see the, the traffic that you see in the summertime, so there will be plenty of space. In the parking area where you can storage, so that, that, that will be discussed.
Spend the eve, evening arguing on this, and I could probably be a good part of that argument. Thing is, that we, we, the planning board cannot consider the, unless it's a usage permitted. So I think we, rather than argue. Possibilities, we should first get it through the ZBA, get an interpretation code. And find out what is allowed there. Because otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels. Once they have defined what is allowed there, we can then argue about. When, how many spaces you need. But let's not, let's not get into, simply, uh. Make a motion to refer this to the ZBA for clarification.
Oh, shall we?
For your code. For it to the code, for code, for.
With the possibility of ending up with ZBA, you're right.
If the applicant wants to appeal whatever decision code enforcement comes out.
And then we can have this argument on and on for the next six months. And it's trying to be that one. And so we can, we can play the document on that one, right?
Great.
That's good.
This is a big project, you've got a, a huge stake in it. And we have came. Places to fulfill the purpose.
They have less pockets.
Yeah, okay, so that's a fair, that one, I mean, you all good, it never, never less. So, number five. Gems in the wood. Only out of them can be done with any reason. Refuse to present a lot of somebody. And Helen, I think we're in trouble.
And it's by a soul of.
So. So this is, this project, I'll, just briefly, uh, to start this project, so this project have been approved, uh, in twenty twenty-two. Gems in the woods, which is right across, like, uh, as Michael said, it goes to Matula. Um, it's behind, it's in front of Lake Fires, Lake Forest, it's behind it. It's an eight-lot subdivision, hopefully happy, probably, some of them are a little larger because of the wetland aid. Uh, this happened fully approved by the. By the planning boards, but it has not been filed because the DOH, the. Ownership changed in between, that's basically when it started moving forward, but it was fully approved. DOH was ready to sign off on it, Keystone had like four or five months left on this project. And DUC was waiting for the sewage wars preparation to be established. Uh, there's a county DPW permit already for the entrance, they already actually cleared some of the, uh, roadway. So we're now simply coming back for that same approval, being that this approval has left. We have to submit a new application, you have to have an publicating, two thirty-nine review, please, I just see an egg deck, whatever, and so on. So, uh.
And the la, and the layer, that layout.
Layout, layout does nothing change, it's exactly the same layout. That's exactly the same layout, that's it has an approval, if you look at the date of this plan, the, the last version is twelve oh two twenty-two, device for town engineer.
Now, what here, this came in August with a whole different plan.
Correct, this came in August with a different layout, but they're back now to the original layout. So it's, I mean, okay, that's what, like, they minded. You know, some grinded differences, and it didn't make sense, because we are, like I said, Romans know the town engineer, know what DOH, know what DUC, it depends.
So that was, that application should be. It was a separate file.
Yes, yes.
Right. So we're essentially starting from scratch. Treating it as a bit of a, a brand replication, so I think the best thing to do for tonight. Is to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting, I think, that you are hoping. Um, and then, um, do the two thirty-nine. And why don't you guys declare your intent to serve as lead agency? Um, this is a realty subdivision, so it has to go for, um, coordinated review, so you should, yeah, send it out to DOH and DUC, other two. Agencies, so let's at least get the procedural stuff out of the way. Public hearing will be at the next meeting, and then folks can look at the plans and kind of re, re-acquaint yourself with this project that was previously. So let's engage, um, the lawyer in your name, Keith.
Yeah.
This, this is a very wet lot, I remember.
Uh, then, then it had the wet front and the front, or the wet front, yeah, it kind of is not being built.
Jen, did you circulate a copy of the US approval on this one? I thought you did. You guys should have all this.
Okay, so we just, the meeting, uh, um, that.
Yes.
Just give me the motion.
I'm giving a motion.
Wait, just make the motion.
Ever. And I think you've got the environment one, the one.
Hold on, what, what are we just doing?
Lead agency on this.
We, yes.
Clear the tent.
And who did it? By the tent. We go to.
Yeah, I second.
Go on, okay. And. We were Eleanor Gordon with the engineers.
We're gonna do the two thirty-nine referral, and hopefully get comments back before the next meeting. And the public hearing will be in the.
Number thirteen.
Number thirteen.
Make sure they don't just lose any points to face, maybe anything.
Here we go. For that, that one, right? Yeah, yeah, it's not re, it's not a reapproval, I know, okay.
Right.
And. Not exactly.
That's hundred percent.
Does that matter, you're starting to.
Right, right, we're signing off, but I'm thinking it's, it's, we didn't change the map since twenty twenty-two.
In twenty twenty-two, I had the, I have a map in twenty twenty. So I missed. It was all so. Starting over. So I understand that, I have. A lot of.
Oh, that's when you, it's probably.
Funny. No. We're starting over too. Next item. You up again?
No, 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 I'm not. I'll be back.
Previously approved site.
So that was a, um, that was an error on the agenda. Um, Luxor Junior never received site plan approval, um, if you'll recall, this is the, um, development that's up by, like, Shelby and Shores. Um, it has very, very long history, it's been around since two thousand and seven. The last time the project appeared was, uh, about a year ago, that was November of twenty twenty-three, and you may recall that we did a conditional. Negative declaration, this is one of those projects where, uh, basically the water usage was factored, you know, into the, uh, list that Ken's been maintaining. And one of the conditions, um, of the neck deck was. Correction of the water tower in, uh, Brooklyn, where it falls. So that, basically, there were essentially two conditions, one was, um, the water tank. Uh, to address the, you know, sort of water capacity, uh, issue for this particular development, and then it was participation in the traffic mitigation budget. Remember, we've got all those developments in our children, and everybody's gotta pay their fair share in case DOT. Requires, um, a light at some point, um, in the future, so that's basically where we left off, and I guess I'll let.
Yeah, I, I've been called for Luxor, I don't think we're gonna be asking available. So I guess I'm gonna carry on for him. Um, Helen has raised two issues, and one, whether there is a, a need for an architectural review. Um, it's my understanding, the structures are gonna be the same as the Luxor development. Um, Randy believes that he has previously provided photographs of those units. Uh, he will be up here tomorrow. Uh he will be up here tomorrow, provide more of the photographs of the same units at Luxor. Helen also uh mentioned the possibility of a phasing plan. Apparently, there were two agreements that were executed many years ago. There's one agreement in two thousand and ten and one agreement in two thousand and thirteen. The two thousand and thirteen agreement provides basically that um. Uh there, the first seventy units uh can only be hooked up to water uh. Within twenty four months. In other words, uh within two years, you can only have seventy units hooked up to water. So uh Randy feels, a- and I understand his position, I'm right, that uh that. First of all, uh we're not gonna be able to to build. Uh uh seventy units in three years with the required infrastructure. And if we do build the seventy units, or if we build more than seventy units. The town will merely refuse to hook up more than seventy units for the first twenty four months. So we don't think there's a need for a phasing plan. The town controls the water hookups. And we can't have more than seventy water hookups for the first two years. Um uh. Otherwise, I think we're ready for a full approval. Um. The property is in sewer and water district. Uh we do need extensions for a portion of the property. Uh it's my understanding that Randy has submitted sewer and water extension reports to Keystone. Um I don't think he's heard whether accepted or not. Uh but as as far as we're concerned, I think we're ready for full approval, subject to the conditions that Helen has outlined in her. In her uh proposed resolution, uh but for the uh. Once again, architectural review and uh. And the phasing.
It was a previous agreement from years ago for the district extension. They had already paid. The town to replace the over on uh maybe would have and and some other. Infrastructure upgrades or that extension that wasn't granted, but there was an agreement to extend it as part of the approval process.
Yeah, we 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 agreed to pay a hundred thousand dollars for that day. So that was something that Molly and I agreed to uh. Uh last year. Uh actually, it was when Molly was last here.
Is there adequate water water and sewer to do this project?
Well, yeah, it's my understanding, it's my understanding that now that the water attack construction, there is water.
Complete the capacity permits. And once those are submitted, that is when, which is the statement on the agenda. That the capacity will be reviewed for the demand. And if. The approval was, there's there's the agreement for the seventy and seventy, so maybe they can get a capacity for. You know, the first phase or or not, but that is when that gets submitted, that's when it get reviewed.
Okay, I I understand that there's enough sewage. Right now, capacity for a number of developments on the on on in that area, the Shadrack area. I think the last I heard when I. Uh about six months ago that there was enough sewage for about seven or eight of the developments that are right now under consideration.
Helen?
Yes.
Is there a way of getting a list of yes, coming up down the pipe with all the projects?
Well, right now, we have not proceeded with any site plan review for any projects in the Locksheld Lake service area. After it was Zimmerman and Luxor Junior were the last two that were. Essentially reserved capacity based on Keystone's analysis. Provided that the old falls water tank was was put into operation, which it hasn't. So after that, we basically, we are not entertaining any other applications in that Locksheld Lake seven.
And what about up on top of the hill where they created a big piece of land where they were gonna put a. Commercial building?
Yeah, those are already, those are already approved. Well, yeah, all those projects were factored in to Keystone's analysis in terms of the the water capacity.
You have that, you have the papers or whatever showing that everything is up to this point to all the projects. There's adequate water and sewer for everything.
That's, Keystone has been keeping a running list.
Who has the list?
We have the list and the town as well.
Um Helen, this, you're handing out a revised. Recite plan and special permit.
Yeah, it's basically, it's a draft site plan and special permit um resolution for Luxor Junior. And you guys don't have to adopt it tonight. Um I know it's been a while since this has been backed. But I was asked to at least start, you know, putting a draft together with some potential um conditions associated with. Um approval of the project. It's looking. Shadrack service area. Yeah, Luxor Junior was factored in.
This project was beaten to death of of many ye- many, many years. I thought it was ready to roll, you know, when then it's nothing happened. Yeah, we had, it's my understanding, I was, I think I was present at one of the meetings. We had two very extensive public hearings. And I know Randy, Randy, Randy had responded to all the concerns that were raised. Uh I think I mentioned it was one of the longest public hearings, my technical there too.
So I don't really agree the um the whereas clauses usually was just kind of skipped to the, you know, to the. Specific conditions. But I think in this case, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna go through because it does talk a little bit about. The history and I think it'll it'll help the board sort of understand where, how we come. Is that okay with you? Okay, so the first whereas clause is that the town of Fallsburg originally received an application for site plan approval for Luxor Junior. Located at the end of Maplewood Drive. Um the project has appeared before the planning board in the town of Fallsburg from time to time on a consistent basis over the past seventeen years. Um the applicant in the town of Fallsburg, this is what um Hayden was um referencing before. Entered into agreement uh on February tenth of two thousand and ten, whereby the town of Fallsburg agreed to extend. The sewer district to include a portion of the site. And the developer agreed to make certain repairs to Maplewood Avenue and to replace an undersized highway column. So that was done. Fees were paid, but the extension basically never, never sort of materials. Next, the applicant and the town of Fallsburg entered into an amended agreement on August thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Whereby the applicant made modifications to the site plan to reduce the size of the proposed event from one hundred and fourteen to one hundred and four units. And the town of Fallsburg agreed to extend the water district to include the proposed event. So it was back in two thousand and thirteen. Those are legal agreements that are are still in place. Um whereas the project has been the subject of four separate public hearings held in two thousand and eight, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eighteen. And most recently, uh September of two thousand and twenty three. And in response to concerns expressed by the public, the number of proposed residential units um has been further reduced to ninety seven. Um whereas the planning board most recently declared its intent to serve as an agency for coordinated review in July of two thousand and twenty three. Um they prepared the parts two and three, um and we issued a conditional negative declaration in November of two thousand and twenty three. The conditions associated with the neck deck were, number one, successful construction and operation of the proposed new water storage tank in Old Falls. Um conceptual approval by DOT of the traffic signal turn lane. Um at such time, the agency deems that it may be necessary. And three, establishment of a transportation improvement fund to which the applicant will contribute. Uh its proportional share of the costs associated with implementation of the traffic mitigation in an amount. Um determined by the town's traffic consultant. I think you have that information from, you know, from Dylan.
All right, and then we, I think we've structurally negotiated the language of the.
Sounds good. So. Um I'm gonna skip the standard conditions because that's, you know, adherence to any and all changes by the planning board engineer. Um payment of fees, uh offer of dedication. Um so now we'll get into the site um specific conditions. Uh number one, town board approval of the water district and sewer district extensions as described in the agreement executed in two thousand and thirteen. Um two, execution of a developers agreement and payments to the traffic mitigation fund in the amount determined by the tra- town's traffic consultant. Um this is the one that we just talked about. Um approval of the exterior design and appearance of the buildings by the town's architectural consultant. Prior to issuance of any uh building permits. Um and that's the, one of the ones before we go on that we should probably discuss. In the past, with other uh types of these developments, you've asked for a rendering. It's gone to Gordon. He's given his feedback. Um uh the history with this is that because it's sort of an extension of the Luxor states. That um it's been represented that the units will, you know, be similar or identical in appearance to those units. So. It's up to you whether or not you want to keep that in, or you feel that uh you've got the architectural, you know, stuff to your care. To you guys.
Well, we were told that this was for the families of the people in in Luxor.
So I'll I'll change it to be something like the uh exterior design and appearance shall be um shall be similar, right? Any variations may require additional. Okay, next. No site to serve in construction shall take place until a safe pollution discharge elimination system or speedies permit. For stormwater is issued by D B C. Uh no wetlands disturbance shall take place until a nationwide permit is issued by the Army Corps of Engineers. Um per the amended agreement, there will be no more than seventy dwelling units connected to the town water system during the first twenty four months of construction. Um and then I had prior to the planning board chairman's signature, the applicant shall provide a bathing plan identifying the units to be constructed during the first phase. Along with any associated infrastructure and amenities. So that's another one that you have to decide whether or not you actually want. Them to phase construction so that you can look at warm capacity sort of beyond, like do the first seventy. And then after that, as you know, that infrastructure capacity is kind of like a moving target. Um or, you know, if you want to strike that.
Well, actually, the contract does phase it on. In other words, it it phases it because we can't, in twenty four months, we can't. Have more than seventy hookups.
Usually.
So that's so it's a self-phasing in the two thousand and thirteen agreement.
Usually for phasing, uh what we've looked at is is sections so that. They finish, you know, houses one through twenty. They don't build a house over this loop and this loop so you can have, you know, if you want to move in.
Right.
So if it's under construction, then it could be a burden or a safety hazard. So some projects, you know, in the past just started building. And then uh people wanted to move into these houses, but next door, the house next door, it wasn't built. And then they're building it, taking a foundation, and there's. A family here. So that would be the only benefit. Probably that wouldn't be, you know, involved with that, um just unit count to actually show which units or which areas would be built. On a basis, but that can be part of them. If 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 you would like that, that would just be part of our review to make sure they provide a phasing plan for construction. Construction sequence.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? That um where they had that with seventy homes. Or whatever the number is, that we get a rough idea of the water usage.
Yeah, I think that might be in the extension plan that.
Well, not to exceed, say if it's. Two hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day or whatever. You know, and this. Uh what I'm trying to say is, I don't want to run into a situation where they say seventy and you're using.
Well, you're limited, you're limited to no more than seven bedrooms uh of the unit. So it's not limited that way.
So the the demand for water and sewer is based on the bedroom count, which is a fixed number by the D E C, the state. And then they also have a master meter and every unit has a meter. And we've looked at projects in the entire town and that every, every meter, doesn't matter, even if you claim there's thirty people in that house. They're they're always under the estimated use.
Uh that's what I want to make sure that all of a sudden we're not using flights of. What the capa- your capacity. And that should be up to the, you know, the. The design engineer and your your approval.
That system that the town has also. That leaks that way. If the water meter doesn't stop spending within twenty four hours, it it sends a notice to the town that there's a leak or possible leak. Or or excessive consumption, which and then the town gets notified and then they get pages of them, you know. Regularly, they think about, you know, check.
So you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the next one after that um to basically say to ensure that sufficient water and sewer capacity is available. Um for the second phase, capacity permits. The remaining dwelling units shall be subject to prior approval from the town engineer. I mean, it kind of goes without saying, but at least it's it's in there, you know. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's already the case, but it's up to you, you want to strike that or just include it in there.
I mean, it's it's fine.
Okay. Um the next condition is there shall be no more than seven bedrooms per dwelling unit. That was part of what was negotiated with the town board. Unfinished basements shall not be converted into additional bedrooms. So that's, again, the building department enforcement issue, but once you build them, seven bedrooms, the seven bedrooms.
Usually, the building plans show three to four. Uh the pavement, and then if the basement was finished, then the two, the number three. They couldn't show all seven on one board and that'd be the problem.
So you want me to just keep it as there should be no more than seven bedrooms per dwelling unit? And then that way.
I mean, the outside is the same, but some, I believe in the the houses in there have different floor plans.
Okay, so that's it. The rest of it is just staff review inspections, you know, the the standard. Are there any other. Site-specific conditions that I I missed? Don't leave it to you. Like I said, I just, I provided this as a draft. Um so you guys are happy with it?
We revised it, so.
Yep.
Right up to date. How do we feel? We want to finish it? It's been seventeen years.
I think it's time to finish. I leave the approval because I'm not sure about the around the next seventeen years.
You gotta think I'm a bright side.
We've got a negative deck, correct?
We have the conditional neck deck was already done a year ago.
Decision to uh vote for site plan. Uh approval.
And special permit.
And special permit. Uh you've got a document, you, I was thinking you can do it tonight, you want more time to read it, help you? And do you care to make a motion to type plan review?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Okay.
Okay, uh all favor? Hey, guys. Hopefully, the next time it'll take a little less time.
But basically, over here, we had your last month and. We had, we had the original uh community building. Well, this is a. You were here originally, uh last month, with this community building. What's originally, this location back end was public. At the end of the playground. Up in this area here. And the swimming pools up in this area here. Um and another group uh club house up in this area here. But we realized that the uh. You know, the families and. However, looked at this, realizing the actual place to. However, looked at this realizing we actually placed this the wrong location, which is like closer up. So the kids don't have to come from the back end. All the way up to the front, low swimming. And we kept it pretty, you know, closer up to the playground, which is right over here. This is big camp facility and the block. Uh. They can house. Is should be pretty close to the playground and the swimming. We we didn't have any acquisition. Everybody was okay with it last month other than asking us. Because we have this line that runs across over here. Um, the town line from how it falls below. Um, manicating, so it was. They said they gotta send out a letter and then that's thirty days to respond. Um. So we did that, then sent it out. Um. And then get a letter back. Um, county review. And basically they were saying here, uh, the original swimming station had pedestrian pathways. It should also be included in the proposed site. But if you look at what was proposed here. We do have a continuous loop. Walkway. All the way around this complete subdivision. We had one right here to connect the original community building. And we have one right here now, which is originally proposed. Um, it's gonna be older. So we are responding the same pathway which we had before. Other um. Question here was adding some landscaping buffer around the shoes.
What we're getting is a week on two thirty nine. Two thirty.
So we're we're okay if they were, you know, putting some more buffer around. We already have a couple of hundred feet buffer to the main road anyway. We left all the existing trees on that subdivision that we did before. Um, and keeping that, so we didn't, we um. Eliminate any of the previous buffer, but we're okay to add some more bushes or landscape. What is this building? Or the, so it's used basically, um, advanced it like over some reasons. Up here, it goes, but we have downstairs, uh, some rooms for the camp. But it's upstairs, that's gonna be like the more or less a daycare room. They can't have short room. Okay. So and we we. We went through the sled time, we were, you know, exact same. Parking as we had before, we're supplying. So when I'm reducing it, we're just moving the building, it should convenience, it should work better. For um, for the for the children, closer to the facilities that they need.
Pretty much.
I just want to make sure. That they have a walkway, so they don't have to walk on the road.
All right, so if you look on the plan, it seems a continuous walkway here. Which is always far, and that, and here's the motion, so we just connected. With the way we connected every house to this continuous walkway around the whole entire perimeter of the whole development. Yes, the answer is. There is continuous walkways in the interior too. And that's the same way we call it.
And that's like the trick, the passage right for the kids to walk. To the playground. That's correct, correct. But we we actually have. Entire perimeter. Of this, this fence that there's.
There's fence along the road, so this is on the interior.
Yeah, but you kids cannot get out onto the road. I I just want to make sure that people drive in and drive out.
Right.
And we don't want to see somebody.
They develop. So the kids can't get out and everything takes, all the activities take place within that.
So that's a good thing.
All right, so the uh, two thirty nine county review came back.
Oh, good, good.
Um, recommendations, local determination. The uh, names are already mentioned, the pedestrian connections, landscapes. Um, same dividing, we make start by compliant.
So this is actually a mobile home park, which is. New York State codes have their uh, writing. Have they wired uh, for of noble home parks? So I've. You know, reviewed um. Um.
What's the date on that site?
It's one over here now, it's August twenty seven, twenty twenty four. Make sure that you will, my goodness, yes.
So we're uh, voting for revision, movement of. Relocation of every building. Um, two thirty nine is sent. We're voting on the uh, August twenty twenty four version of the site plan, the version. Divides.
Correct.
I have a motion to.
I'll make a motion.
Site plan amendment. I'm voting second. Second option. All right. Okay. All favor. Any guests? Who are revised?
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, number eight. The tier road. You can even do a subdivision. One hundred fifty seven point eight acres. Two roads coming north.
Um, Ivan called before, um, tier road. And uh. All those who care, the Yankees are winning one zero.
True.
Um.
The Yankees are winning.
One zero. Um.
Sure did.
There have been numerous uh. Uh, issues raised during the public hearing. And in letters that have been drafted since, I have responded to all by two separate letters. Uh, we're, you have uh, now. Um, Helen has raised a couple of issues. And one is uh, the maintenance of the buffer area, the road and the storm uh, um, mitigation area. That's going to be by an HOA. Helen also uh, raised the issue of a management system for the uh. Um. Uh, two hundred, hundred twenty-two acres of conservation land. Well, the developers are gonna own that. Uh, each uh, property owner will have a deed of easement to use it for recreational purposes, fishing, hunting, camping, hiking. Uh, or just walking around and hiking out. Uh, no snowmobiles will be allowed. Uh, no ATVs will be. Um, but there was an issue raised in two thirty nine review.
Hey, well.
That it's an agricultural district. Um, and that. Purchasers should be notified that because of the location of it. That there could be noises, dust, odors, uh, and in all instances where. Property that's being sold is agricultural district, so must contain. Uh, language advising the buyer of those hazards and then agriculturial. So I think all of the concerns have been raised by Helen. And two thirty review, I believe, uh, buyers responded to. And I think there might be another issue that Helen raised or someone raised about cul-de-sac. I think at the end of the road, I'm not sure. That was an issue I think kind of be able to address that.
Uh, comment you're talking about with the cul-de-sac, they were, they were seeking um. They wanted a pathway essentially from the cul-de-sac out to the conservation area. Uh, this is the most recent plan that I had in front of me. So right here is uh, it would. Running along the lot line of lot three and lot four, we're showing uh, an access easement. Uh, that would benefit all of the property owners so they can.
Can we see that?
Yeah, could you please turn it to turn and then with, yeah, with people.
So right here, between lots three and four, um, there's a fifteen foot wide access easement. Um, which is large enough for anyone that wants. Uh, the access.
So my client has corrected me, but ATVs will be permitted. Uh, no jeeps, but ATVs will be, will be permitted on the property. So I correct what I said earlier.
So Ivan, that brings up a a point, if I may, I just want to um, read some of the sections of the code that's going to relate to. Um, cluster developments. Is that all right with you, um, Arthur? Because I think that would direct us. Going forward in terms of what um, additional uh, information is needed. So I just want to clarify um, for the board um, that. Cluster developments again are permitted in all residential only districts. There's no variances, there's, there's, this is all permitted as a grant. Um, I want to make sure you understand that the cluster development provision of this early code. Um, is done. As guided by the physical cultural and natural features of the particular property. So it's about open space conservation. And preserving natural resource. It's not necessarily sort of community character, right? So somebody could come to you with a hundred acre. Lot of lands that has an old drive and a movie theater on it. If it doesn't have any conservation value, then it's not. You know, sort of really eligible for cluster subdivision. So the things that you're looking at is steep slopes, wetlands, lands containing farm operation. Or within five hundred feet of the farm operation and in an ag district. So that's why this particular property. Fits into the definition of the intent of the the cluster um, provision of this own. So there's a couple of things in the code that are required, that I think it would be um, it would be good to have in writing in the file. Um, before approval is granted. So first in the code, under the procedure, I know that you guys have already established the development yields, the seven lots. Um, but in order to determine the conservation value of the open space on a specific parcel of land. The applicant shall prepare, the planning board shall review a conservation plan, um, which includes areas uh. Maps, which clearly, you know, sort of demarcate the area with the conservation value. So I think. If the applicant can prepare a conservation plan that we're, sort of maps out on the conservation parcel, what are those natural features that? It's intended to preserve, that will check that box. Um, the other thing that. Would be helpful is um, let me get to the management plan part of it. So permanent open space and cluster development. Uh, protected open space may be included as a portion of one or more large building lots or may be contained in a separate open space lot, which is the case here, right? It's a separate lot, um, that'll be dedicated open space.
Exactly.
Such open space may be owned by a homeowners association, one or more private landowners, a nonprofit organization, the town or another government entity.
It will be owned by the developer.
Uh, or a homeowner's, as you said before, homeowner's.
The homeowner association will only be responsible for the roads.
Okay.
The buffer area and the management, stormwater management.
Gotcha. So the code specifically talks about the management plan for the open space land that will be prepared by the applicant and submitted to the planning department, uh, for the the planning board. Uh, for filing prior to signing. Um, so I think if you were put there some sort of narrative that again talks about the conservation. Value, you know, of the land that's being protected, what features there are that's being conserved. And then articulate your management plan for the parcel. That's something that that gets, you know, incorporated as part of the, you know, as part of.
I say, crack about only new landowners having right of way on that property.
Well, yes, yeah, we'll indicate that.
That's a point on the man.
We'll that indicate that as part of the management.
Yep. So again, open space set aside in a cluster development shall be permanently protected as required by the subsection. Protected open space land shall be clearly delineated and labeled on any final site plan as to its use. Ownership, management, method of preservation, and the rights, if any, of the owners of the lots, the subdivision of the land. So. Um, if that information could be added, you know, to the plan itself. Yeah, on to the plan itself, that would cover that.
He, before you go any further on that. They, he talked about no ATVs, now they say ATVs.
Yeah.
Is that, that's not really protecting our land if if they're riding ATVs all over conservation piece.
Well, that would be put in the management plan and that's something that the planning board would review. And if that's something that you don't, if you feel is contrary, you know, to the, you know, objectives, and that's something that we can. This stuff.
If you have a plan, it's like, it's, it's something.
What ATVs would be.
We're gonna go over the management plan with stuff.
No, it's something before, prior. Last, last month. Mr. McCarthy made a statement. If you go to page twenty-eight of the, of the minutes. Okay? You'll find that. Statement was. Okay? Oh, come on. Ellen, you want to read it? Cause I can't.
You read it.
Mr. McCarthy, remember?
Yes.
Dave McCarthy, my main concern is that the applicant. Came here and you're ready to go back to the zoning board to get the zoning changed. When he came back. A part of the zoning board said he owns the property. We should check with the county the day of the meeting. He did not own the property. He had half a day. Of paper saying that he owned the, how do I go through this? That he owned the property that he submitted. His attorney also knew that he did not own the property and he didn't come clean until. He showed that he didn't own the property. My problem is there is no concrete mindset. If you come here and lie and you can turn it around. And continue with the application.
That's enough.
Let's see him.
So what's the, what's the point, Gary?
The point is. If you didn't own, if you didn't own the property, how can you get a balance?
He didn't get a balance. The CVA denied the variance and subsequently the property is now under full ownership of the.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, well, what, what. What happened was. That when the application was made before the planning board, the engineer prepared that application. And we had authority of the owner to make that application. We were a contract vendee at the time. I entered the application for the uh, for the CVA. And I was under the mistaken impression that my client owned the property at that time. This issue was raised, this issue was raised at the CVA. And I corrected the application to indicate. As an attorney uh, familiar with the issues, that there was a, please. That there was a signed contract and we were a contract vendee. And I believe that Dylan uh, or whoever else was present said that we were appropriate. We were then validly before the CVA. So. So Mr. So Mr. McCarthy's comments.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Were offensive. I got, but I wasn't, and I corrected that by, oh, it's a CVA.
Is there any question today on the ownership of that property? The applicant owns it, correct?
Yeah.
How good owns it? Assuming the contract which was signed in that existence, well, we went before the CVA. Simple as that. Exactly.
That's what we wanted.
Yeah.
And you have, I have a copy of the document and to explain some.
I just have to spot that minute soon.
Right. Right. Um.
Can we continue on on additional stuff that we need? So um. The land needs to be permanently protected by a conservation easement. Um, the code requires that um, if utilized, that easement must be granted to the town, the approval of the town board. Or to a qualified nonprofit conservation organization acceptable to the planning. Have you discussed who's actually going to hold the conservation easement?
Um, my client will own the property and the deed will, we will, the, the. Approval map will indicate uh, that he will be the owner and subject to uh, the environmental plan and the operational plan that we will submit.
So Dylan, is that something that you will require that language to be reviewed by you and? Do you actually need a conservation easement holder that has, you know, basically enforcement rights, either the town or a nonprofit with the land?
Right. I mean, typically you are gonna need to have. That right, because otherwise there's. From a deed perspective, nothing can ever be done on it. But as far as giving it teeth, typically you do have that nonprofit or a town that holds the right, because they would be the one that enforces it. If somebody, you know, starts building houses or, you know, does something they're not supposed to on the property. So that's really your mechanism of enforcement.
There's also another way of doing it, just thinking off the top of my head, we can re-convey the property. Uh, to ourselves again with, is in the deed that a portion of the scribe portion will be a conservation easement. And will be in that build uh, property. So that's something you have to think about. Are we gonna do that?
That has to be the right way, yeah.
Oh, that would be one, that would be one way to do it. And also the site plan map can show the conservation and delineate it. As, as what exactly what's covered the boundaries of it.
So the, the code doesn't require the, the flat and the site plan clearly show that the open space is permanently reserved. For open space purposes and shall contain a notation indicating the libor and page of any easement required um, to be filed prior to the filing of the map. Um, to be filed prior to the filing of the map. Um, so that has to be actually, you know, on the plans. So. I mean, I, I've made up to the attorneys to decide the appropriate legal mechanism to ensure that that conservation parcel is. You know, permanently protected.
Show that it'll be in the deed, it'll be on these, on the, on the.
I'll do, I'll look into it.
Okay. Nope, sounds good. Um, that.
Who determines the size of these lots? You said two acres. Can we, can we say instead of two acres? Because there's other issues with possibly water. And then other sewer work that these lots are by.
What they're applying for, we're not, I don't think we're dictating that. We're sort of looking for a minimum, you've applied for it, for these particular acreages. Um, we don't, I don't see why we're, we're getting a hundred and thirty one acres. Protected land outlets. Somewhat smaller lots, but two acres is not too bad. We've tested, they've tested the soil, we've tested the work. Um, there's no purpose in this. And change, we don't know the property, we're not there. The applicant is making the application. We can accept it or, or deny it, but I don't see us changing it. Because we're changing it for no reason. It looks like a line on a map.
Just for clarification.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
The purpose of this. Is in return for the protection of, of a large piece of property forever. It can never be built in. How friends and the ability to make use. They have to be liable lot. That's the purpose of it, that's the price. And that's why the developers doing it, and that's why the county particularly likes sub division. In reading the two thirty nine you give. The uh. But in the anticipated uh, impact. Subdivision and conservation easement can enhance local biodiversity by conserving open space, natural habitat. Social land and recreational space. If you would have changed the size of the lots that they've. We have less land that's protected. Why would we wanna do this? We want as much land as we can, less.
I understand what you're saying, but if you had, if you made it five acre lot.
But we're not, we're not set of that way. This is their application. We either accept it or deny it.
Just, just for the record, the code. Is the minimum lot area and yard requirements for cluster development or cluster subdivision. For one family dwellings in the ag and the rec zoning districts, the minimum lot size should be one. Right.
Smallest lot is two point.
And the largest is, well, with.
This, besides the uh. Yeah, six point nine, uh, five point six. Um, so those are the two largest. They're around. Mostly are lots or over two, the, yeah, two point seven five is the smallest. We set an arbitrary minimum of two.
So there are seven lots. Would you, would you mind just, um.
I'll just go through all.
Let's go through all of them.
Lot one, two point six five, lot two, two point seven two, lot three, five point six six, lot four, six point nine one. Lot five is six, or excuse me, three point zero seven, lot six, two point. Four three, lot seven, four point six seven, and lot eight is a hundred point. So, um. We have a hundred and fifty five acres that we're dividing this up between. So the bigger the residential lots. It eats away, uh, as the chairman's noting from the conservation area. And they're all above, almost triple the size of the minimum.
There's two other things in the code that I just wanna, if you want me to put it in like a formal comment memo for the applicant, that's fine. Um, the code requires that ongoing maintenance standards be established and enforceable uh, by the town. Against the owner of the open space land as a condition of approval. Um, so that should go into the document that you're preparing. So it would be the conservation plan. The management plan, which would include maintenance standards, right? How, how it's gonna be maintained, how often, so that there's something that. The town can then compare, um, you know, sort of uh, against. The last thing that the code um, requires is prior to site plan approval, the developer shall file with the planning board a performance bond to ensure. The proper installation of all park and recreation improvements, which there are none in this case. Um, and to ensure, uh, and a maintenance bond to ensure proper maintenance of all common lands. So I bring it up because that was something that was um, mentioned at the public hearing. You know, does the planning board feel like there should be a performance bond either for maintenance or for um, any potential well impacts?
vacant land.
I'm sorry?
Say vacant land, if the, to the, no purpose having a bond to, to do anything on it, there's nothing to do.
Because the wells could.
The works on the property themselves on a. Well, we have to approach that in a moment.
I was gonna say, there are two separate issues, but I figured while we're discussing the idea of a performance bond, then I would bring it up that. That's another option that the planning board could consider. It was a performance bond for any potential impacts to neighboring wells.
And I don't know how that's gonna be managed. I don't know if the town is gonna wanna add personnel, inspect a hundred and twenty two or a hundred and forty acres. Periodically to make sure that the lawns are cut and the trees are trimmed. So I don't know what we're supposed to do on a management plan. I do know. But it does intend to remove some of the marketable trees. It will be done in accordance with the recommendations of the D E C. So there will be no clear cutting. And in fact, the D E C recommends uh, periodic foresting. Uh, which will allow uh, additional growth and food and foliage with deer and uh, another game. So that's something.
That should go into the maintenance plan. That's, this is how you can take the maintenance in the property.
It's probably none of my business, but I'm gonna ask you anyway. And a half a million dollars been paid, pardon? Has the half a million dollars for the property been paid? Oh, I don't know why that's relevant.
That's not relevant.
Not relevant, if you don't hear it. What does it have to do with Gary?
We, we have been involved in that. If the, if the applicant owns it, he owns it. We don't worry about. It's not our consideration that they paid or not paid.
We owns it by the deed.
We have the deed, we don't care about them. The um. Tell them, is there, is there something in there about elimination of the uh, area that's protected, some way of marking it?
Yeah, that is um, conservation plan, but. Um, some of these will end up being um, conditions that go into the, you know, the final site plan resolution. Um, let's see. So the open space management plan is sort of documenting the location of the open spaces. Um, the following documentation should be included in the report. Location, meets and bounds, uh, map, up to date aerial photos, photographs of the conservation easement area. Keyed into the teacher showing on the approved plan. All that needs to be um, submitted as part of the legal process.
So that has to be done before.
Um, well, who we, who we asked that, the, the application being granted subject to compliance with the. Requirements that Helen has suggested. I would ask Jen to send me a copy of the transcript when it's done, so we can look at that and make sure that we follow uh, the plan.
I was gonna, I have, but I was gonna have.
Sure, and I'll, I'll, I'll send it in an email, but, but basically what I would be more comfortable if we have that information. Ahead of time, you know, before. So we're talking about the conservation plan, the management plan, including the maintenance standards for the property. And the conservation um, easement language. Those are the, those are the critical pieces that I think. Before you do your approval. And then there are other parts of the code that can be incorporated um, as conditions, like. No further subdivision of any lots, no paved areas or other imperious surfaces outside of the building envelopes. You know, outlined on the plan, you know, that kind of thing.
Other than three things I need to do with those housekeeping. Um, we are receiving several letters. We, the, the public hearing open, we have, we have two here. Emperor, I don't want to butcher the first name, Folcino. Um, with concerns, we have another letter from Heather Raymond. Which I want entered in the uh, public hearing record. He said it was open for. Um, usually, they, they, basically the same problem with, there are people with concerns about traffic. Water, uh, visual. And depending on wildlife, which we're protecting the wildlife. Water is a big deal. We're also concerned, uh, I think there's a misunderstanding about what's going on. People are very concerned in town because we have so damn many big developments, duplexes. And we wanted, some of us wanted, um. Not have them in our area. It's a rural area, we're talking about. What this does, and I, I emphasize this, cluster is a protection for people living there. You're gonna see two houses on the road. There's the short road going back, there, there will be a total of seven houses altogether. They have a legal right to that, no matter coming to us or not. The other choice is to divide the property into ten acre blocks. Build roads all over the place and sea slopes, et cetera. And then, then, then the land is cut off into spikes. We'll put everything in one place and leave the rest green, leave the rest alone. And I personally like the idea of clustering because it protects so much. But nobody can ever build on that protected area. We're putting over a hundred acres into a, a, forever protected zone. Otherwise, the town board could come around in some future time and say three acres only, seven tents. But then you've got fourteen houses, twenty houses. This can't take place. Even, no matter what the town boards. Does with a future home, this, this hundred and something acres is protected. And I think that's a good thing. I don't think it's something I would complain about. I mean, I, I look closer to some of these, these look like developments where I am. I'm, I would be thrilled if they could have turned some of that land into protected land, so I didn't have to look at it. But this is what you're getting. You're getting in return for seven houses, not on reasonably sized acres. You're getting protection. And I, I think there's a misunderstanding. It's something favorable.
Two percent.
That land is gonna be developed one way or the other. This way most of it is limited. My feeling is not. Anyway, uh, the, the other thing I wanted to bring up, we're gonna close the input from the public here in a moment.
Do you have my letter? Cause I didn't hear my name.
Uh, yes, what's your name, please?
Lasha Snahera. Lasha Snahera.
Yeah, it's filed, they're got it.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure the board has it.
They got it. Yeah, we got it. I just didn't put it together with the other one. I believe they have it here. We'll, we'll make sure we, we enter it.
It's in the minutes too.
Yeah. Um, I have a question on the well. What, uh, what, what should we do about, there's gonna be seven properties as well, John? Uh, what is the way to make sure that this is not a problem to do?
Subdivision has to review. Septics, in addition to us. Drill a well and if the well doesn't produce enough water or good impacts, then they will. You know, not be able to use it. They'll review that. They have a kind of a requirement for, I believe it's five gallons per minute.
Five gallons per minute, and if you can't achieve that, you need a holding tank in the building. But uh, it's, as part of the health department review, I did, I have been in contact with them. They're telling me that because. Um, four of the lots, oh, excuse me. It's, it's five lots, less than five acres you need for it to be considered a realty subdivision of subject to their review. This didn't fall under that, so that they wouldn't be involved in that. Um, I can forward you that correspondence, but, um. Yeah. Uh, the, the, it, as far as separation distances, how much the well yields, those notes are all on the plan. They need different requirements of the. Uh, the county and the state.
Okay, yes.
I was, the reason that I mentioned about my, us to make sure we have it. If there's a situation where you're in the middle of August and one of the wells drives up. And you have a septic in a certain area where it happens, you have a little more option for drilling a well in a different area. And this is why I mentioned about making sure, like, why, if there is a problem, it can be addressed. I, I thought that also that you did the septic and you already did the, the uh, drilled the well with a drawdown test. Seeing what you have. And that was the way I was assumed that that was already done, Don.
We haven't done the well. At the first meeting that I was in front of this board, you requested one test well. Um, at that time, it was the week that we had done.
When did it, when was that set up? Is that in a private meeting?
No, no, it was, it was in this office, I mean, in this room, excuse me. We didn't perform that test yet.
Okay, well, uh, uh, next meeting?
Uh, I mean, we can. Um, yeah, if we, uh, condition of approval where we can do it prior to approval, but that was always the intent was to drill that well. What we've been doing since that time is finalizing the design of the septic locations, because those are a lot more tougher and. Uh, and dependent upon the soil testing that we did.
Didn't you do it for the?
We did, we did, I think, six days worth of soil testing all over this uh, front of this property. To determine uh, the best uh, locations for these septic systems. Each lot, uh, each lot, um. Is designed to support the four bedroom houses that are proposed and have a reserve area and, um. And is required. So there's essentially room for two septic systems on each lot.
I, that's why I'm trying to make sure that, um, you have enough room if this goes through. That you can, you know, you, the water is one of the biggest situations. What I've been hearing and.
No, no better when they drill that well.
Is there any reason why you couldn't, um, if they haven't drilled us girl yet, why you couldn't mandate them to do, you know, drawdown tests on neighboring wells? So ensure that there's not.
Intent to take the cooperation from neighbors. Do that.
No, but you can ask.
Our biggest, uh, I guess, reason why we haven't done it yet is, uh, we're, you're, we're talking about. Changing the lot size to ten, that's something that you're floating in this uh, comment. We don't wanna drill a test and find out, we have to move it later. That's a huge expense on the applicant that, uh, we don't wanna incur. Before this has been, more or less, okay, this is where the lots are going to be established while we address the remaining technical comments.
I don't think it's unreasonable to require them to do the test well, you know, based on the.
Just, just out of curiosity, what's the separation required from the septic system and the water system?
Uh, it, it's uphill of it, it's a hundred feet, if it's downhill, it's two hundred feet.
So, so with a hundred feet separation, if you have a well that doesn't work, you have plenty of land. Uh, on two and a half to five and a half acres to flood to another place.
It, I mean, there is restrictions, I mean, they interact with each other. So, you know, there is multiple locations for them to be placed, but, um.
Well, the test well comes in good, I mean, one year by now. And that's pretty good assurance that the other, others could also. It's a fairly compact area. Then we, then we know, why, why arguably you got that?
Yeah, I think.
It's less of an issue of, of well yield than it is impact on neighboring properties. So I think that. It should also include a drawdown test of neighboring properties that are willing to let their wells be monitored as the testing.
Yeah, but.
May, maybe I'm misunderstanding something. Isn't that a function of obtaining the building permit? Uh, and when we're ready to build it. And if we can't have water, we don't get a building permit. Simple as that. So I think, and then those. Applications, I believe, have to go to the building aspect. It is reduced. So, so if we get approval. And we cannot put together a, a water system and a lot, then that. then that lot can't be sold.
Right, right. This is a subdivision. Just like any other subdivision, you have to demonstrate that each of these lots can support an individual well and an individual septic system. So you've already done your soil testing, proven that each of those lots can support a septic system. I think all the board is asking is for similar documentation to prove that each of these lots will be able to support the well. And I think that's fairly standard. Dayton is that, we've seen it.
When is the best time to pass the well?
Well, I'm not a hydrogeologist, but usually they say the fall is the lowest water table.
Right now, it's dry. It's been dry. So I'm getting, it's a good time right now.
Okay, is there anything else we need to do on this?
Yeah.
I just want to make one final, one final point on the well and the water in general. Um. How this application is structured is pushing all the development, uh, into one location and thereby reducing the overall clearing, the overall, um, disturbance, tree removal, uh, that is going to incur, uh, as part of the project. If we were to go to a conventional lot, um, that has been discussed where it'd be more sprawling, there would be more clearing, which could produce more runoff during storm events and ultimately would not make it into the groundwater table and therefore it by that nature impact the groundwater as well, while it's still pulling the same amount of water from the groundwater. So by clustering the subdivision and maintaining eighty-two percent of the property in a conservation, uh, or protection of some kind, it ensures like, uh, that more rainwater will reach the ground, uh, and infiltrate the soils. It's hard to quantify that.
And then with fewer roads, you have less impervious coverage.
It's like.
Okay, uh, we know we need to have, yeah. At this point, I want to motion to close the public hearing. Do we have that motion on the, over a second?
Second.
Okay, so you've done, you've done that, that's closed the topic running. Everything you need, you know what you need.
Send me the email from the Department of Health for, uh, as a smaller realty subdivision, because that will, that will impact Seaver. Um, I think when you come back.
I've never heard of that. Usually it's five, one, one.
That's what I thought, too, is that it's, it's five lots. The act encouraged it.
That's what I thought when I discussed it, when maybe said with the law.
Right. Can I send that to all of us?
Yeah, okay. Should be, I sent it to everyone in my office too.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break.
All right, thank you.
Send you what? Okay, yeah, that's, that's not.
How many thousand notes?
I'll say five, but you know.
Of course, they need to demonstrate the case.
Right, right.
I don't need your ball.
No, 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 you know about spread. It's like.
As I mentioned, there are three additional residential units in the Carport Building. Uh, twenty-five by forty day camp building to, is that the same building? And a twenty-five by forty day camp building, replacement for our own town intended camp building. If you're restricting one building.
Really moving, relocating an existing building that was there, relocating it.
Right.
And then we would like to add this.
I'll, I'll explain it here. I'll, I'll explain it to you, Kelly Brazil. Um, so Zimmerman State, fifty-two Zimmerman Road is approved and under construction uh, for the last couple of years. And it's basically, uh, fifty-two, uh, units on the property that's under construction that was previously approved by the board. Um, the original survey that we get, that we use, we, before we started the project several years ago, uh, was sixteen point two acres, which the density for the zone worked out to, um, the fifty-two units that were built. Actually fifty-three, so it's fifty-two million units plus the caretaker's house, which is the former Bruce Savinsky house. Um, a new survey was subsequently done a couple of, two years ago and it had the different bounds along Route fifty-two side. So it went from sixteen point two acres to sixteen point nine five acres. So that. All right. That's similar. So that, uh, thirty-some thousand additional square feet worked out to three additional units that were, uh, in the property and meet the zoning protection. So, uh, what we got is between, between Zimmerman Road and the stream that runs to the property is all grass stripped out of there. So what we're doing is showing, uh, three additional units. So instead of fifty-two new units, there's fifty-five new units proposed on the project. Um, since we got original approval years ago, the town board changed the zoning. So the, it used to be a front yard setback. It's thirty-five feet off the roadways. It's now, it's now fifty feet for this type of townhouse unit. So we moved the units back, so they meet the fifty-four front yard setback. So, uh, this would meet, um, would meet zoning when no variances needed. There was an old house on the property that Joseph Inskey used to live in, the contractor. That was going to be the day camp building, which on the original plan, but once, uh, everyone got into it, looked at it closely, it was falling apart. So it was demolished last, last year, then taken down.
Like condemned.
Condemned and, and then I found, um, instead of doing a day camp in that building, uh, we're showing a twenty-five by forty foot new building, also in that grass area between Zimmerman and the stream, uh, for the, for the day camp. And we did have, I mean, original proof plans had a basketball court and handball court on the property, which had just moved up to make room for the mid triplex. So the thing is still there. It's just got moved around with the three new units. So at some point, subject to the waters, okay, we'd like to go for a, I guess, a public hearing on this modified site plan or change of site plan. And we're running, uh, two thirty-nine referral, but we're on the state highway. And now, one last thing. Um, we had, this was in South of the staff meeting, may recall, Mr. Chairman, a month or so ago on the water issue. So Zimmerman was approved for a certain amount of water. Uh, fifty-two units was three hundred and twelve bedrooms. And of course, one hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom. So that water amount was approved by the town board. We're adding, uh, twelve, twelve new bedrooms here, four bedrooms per unit. So what the agreement was, and we'll come out of plan somehow, is, um, all the Zimmerman houses, basically they're four bedroom units, that was approved for six bedrooms per unit. So theoretically, two bedrooms could be built in the basements of those, each of those units, subject to the, that particular owner getting a building permit from the town to fill the basement. So we're gonna basically have the town not approve any basements, had to define the last twelve basements in those units, in units to compensate for the twelve basements, twelve bedrooms in the three units.
So we're, we're not increasing the amount of use, of water use until the town has more water available.
We're gonna stick with the maximum three hundred and twelve, um, bedroom is what the water counts based on, until the town develops water, more water, town engineer approves and then it's all.
What you're saying is we can, you get the extra water by only having four bedrooms instead of six.
No, what we're saying is we're not going to allow twelve bed, basement, twelve bedrooms to be built in the basements of the existing development after the twelve bedrooms that will be added here until such time as the town comes up with more water and the town engineer approves it. So we have room for three, practically those twelve additional bedrooms.
It came up, um, with the capacity department. Do they have to revise the permit? But if that's the case, can we approve that? Because we've stated that there's not, you know, water capacity for this area. So how do you get to add the units without increasing demand? So that's, this is what was proposed now to address that.
But I'm not increasing that. You're right. That's what it was now. They can't put all the basement bedrooms in that, that will, that would.
And, and the reality of it.
How many are going to be built in the basement?
Because the building department will not give those permits.
How many, how many people have built in the basement without permits?
I believe everyone's getting permits. As, as far as I know. I don't know that basements are being constructed without permits.
So can we, can we do an inspection report?
Of course.
Here for now?
A hundred percent. For, for example, there's two, if there's two bedrooms per basement in each of the fifty-two units, that's a hundred and four bedrooms. We're basically saying now they can't build up. They can't get permits for a hundred and four bedrooms. They get permits for ninety-two bedrooms. Because the other twelve are being allocated.
Yeah, but then, then you're coming back in, in a year or two and you're saying now we want to build it.
And they're going, they'll say we can't issue any permits and.
I, I think, I think we're making, we're making a, a, a element out of something because we know that the town is actively pursuing finding and increasing the water capacity. So we're talking about such a minute amount of water that's needed to.
It would be twelve, it would be nineteen hundred and eighty gallons if you were to just add these units. So nineteen hundred and eighty out of, I forgot what the total.
So about thirty-five, thirty-five thousand. So we're talking about a minute amount. We're just trying to move the, move the, move the ball down the road and, but it's obviously they're actively, you know, Hayden and Keystone, along with the town water department, they're actively pursuing all different avenues to increase water capacity.
Do you want to actually for a public hearing at the next meeting?
Yes.
We just proceed.
And also referral to the county division of planning from two thirty.
Yes.
And two thirty-nine. So that's it for tonight.
Yes, sir. The only thing I would add is, because we, we talked about it, the existing construction, there's been some potholes and damage to.
Oh, we agreed.
The applicant agreed that they would, that everybody would like it at some point in a resolution, just to, you know, violate that they, you know, address the road to satisfactory of the highway superintendent.
Hundred percent.
So we're, we're site planned, we, uh.
Wait, oh, yeah, yeah.
Don't say that. David.
All right. Those, those whole here?
Yeah, the public hearing.
Okay. Do we need to vote on two thirty-nine or we just?
Fifty-seven, two twenty-nine without a vote.
Right. I'll put together, I guess, and, and. Thanks, everybody.
Very much. All right, Kenley, uh, Sunshine State.
Uh, good evening, Joel, from Sunshine Estates, uh, along with Mr. Mitich, both, uh, from Sunshine Estates. Um, I guess I'll read the letter that I submitted, so I can explain what, uh, what this is. Uh, Sunshine Colony is an existing bond reconnoitering on my list, uh, right, it's became Louder Flakes and Black Valley Road. Uh, that was originally established in the late nineteen forties with subsequent additions in nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty. The property currently includes eight structures and a swimming pool that had been unfunctional for nearly two decades to do to a lack of maintenance. The property currently includes eight structures and a swimming pool that has been non-functional for nearly two decades, to, due to a lack of maintenance. The colony is facing financial operational difficulties, as it needs a lot of maintenance and not enough residents to pay for the expenses. And therefore is proposing to add a multifamily use to the property, and construct four, three units. Multifamily buildings for a total of twelve units, with associated parking spaces that will be on the Sunshine Colony property and on the neighboring property, which will. Uh, provide the maintenance for parking and in-ear and in-ear. This will be of tremendous help to them, as it will provide crucial revenue, ensuring the long-term viability of the Sunshine Colony. And the challenge, and the challenges they currently face. They also propose to demolish their existing pool, which is kind of the center here, and replace the pool on a different location in the area of the property. Uh, the property is within the HR zoning district, which allows multifamily homes of special use permit, subject to site plan review. Uh, the project will require a variance for the minimum lot width. As required is hundred fifty feet, and this, the lot is currently about just eighteen point five seven feet wide. Which is a, an existing condition. It will also require a variance for lot coverage, as required, lot coverage is twenty-five percent maximum, and proposed is twenty-five point six eight. Um, so that, that is basically the project, what we're asking for. Tonight is to be referred to the zoning board, so that we can proceed with the variance, and any other info that the planning board might have, so that we can, uh, be ready for the future.
You want us to turn it down because we don't need to.
That is true, but if you have any input, uh, I mean, not. Not don't need to call that all, but just a little bit over, or under, so. Uh, and any other info that the planning board might have for this project, should this project move forward.
Well, we're gonna give this to Helen again.
Yeah, I'd take, I'd like to take, um, a closer look at the zoning and just.
What about access to get fire truck and.
Right now, they can't do it.
Now, these are things that, um.
We met with Randy. From the project. So we met with Randy, uh, from Water and Sewer. Um, and we reviewed exactly where the water would come from, or where the sewer would come from, what his suggestion was, he suggested we do sewer from once, uh, from the. Um, follow the same sewer line on the Vista Road, and water he suggested perhaps for the Roberts Road. So we discussed that with.
Good. Did you discuss capacity? Whether they had the waters?
Yes, yes.
Alright, we'll get into that when we get into the detail. Go ahead, Paul.
No, I just saying, after there's a fire, trying if there's, uh. Hotel has to get in, if there's, we're.
There's two options, are they coming either from the side road that was gonna be, uh, like the Joel presented? Or from the front, there's a second deep rest through the dodger property that's already there, and we can come right in with the big.
What?
Wide property.
What happens, could I drive and shut driver?
Oh.
So the deal is. We wanna make sure that people when they park and. Are not blocked, and so we can't get down here and say. These are the things that I. Thank the insecurity is so much important, and you need, and you need something, by the way, you wanna know to get in and get out.
That's one of the reasons why we're moving the swimming pool to the back corner, you know, we need the whole center cleared and open, so that you have the space for to get, could you get a. Uh, if you, just be it over here, if I may, uh, guys, right here, if you come in through right there, you have a full access right through the center, and to get anywhere you need to.
Yes, well, another thing just to think about, and give you a little bit of advice is. You're gonna get a chlorine delivery, if you want it, why? And you wanna make sure that you don't have kids running around, and the trucks coming and delivering, before you see a chance for options. Of people getting hurt, and also, um, with the heaters, the LP tanks. So, so you wanna, you wanna try to set that up, so that people are safe, when the trucks pull in and out. Today, they don't want trucks back in it, you need to have in and out. And the truck never turns around, if you know, like. These are the things that I'm seeing more and more with the fire truck. So, um.
Appreciate that, well taken, there happens to be a road behind you. Um, there happens to be a road right in the back, when we head to the end, right over here, that's a whole part.
Beautiful.
Yeah, there's.
Well, these are the things to incorporate for safety, safety and security.
Okay. Or, can I just mention that, um, looking in the system, the last camp inspection was in twenty-one, and it failed. So we would suggest that, um, code me, you know, you over there, and book her.
Yeah, we, we can't move on anything with a failed inspection. With any violation, that, that's something you can take care of. Anything else? The bucket's gonna be empty.
Thank you. Any, any advice? They gotta know what to be up against.
Just be honest, and tell what you want. How much you want.
End of screen. New kid on the block.
Well, you gotta show them you're, you're having a hardship. And you got older buildings that are condemned or whatever.
Yeah.
And you gotta do the right thing.
That's really, that's the actual, that's the storyline.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, just because it's the two uses, you know, so I just wanna take a quick look, but I'm sure you got it.
I don't know. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, you have a good night. But I can see, I don't stay here, I can stay, I have what to do. Put your coloring book in.
I think it's a, a DVA referral, it was. Right, they can just go to DVA, without a formal referral from the. Say again?
I think it's.
Okay, we're now, one and a half acres size short.
Okay. Area nine. Okay, rejected be, based on area. If needed. Alright, you're looking at some steam.
Hey. I'm Jim D. Winter, I'm. I'm Mr. Phil's thing this morning, this evening. What's? What is proposed, is to, basically create a lot line adjustment. In which, uh. The one point four, three acre portion, that lot. Twenty-three. Going to be taken off of that lot, and added to. Seventeen point five. Uh, basically, it results in reducing the lot area of lot twenty-three, from four point eight eight acres to three point. Four five acres, increasing the. Lot, seven two point five, or seven point one acres, one point six nine acres. Uh.
Okay, there's a note here, um, it says that there's an open violation. For occupancy without a C V O since twenty twenty-two.
Well, that's something I was not aware, which, which lot is that on?
I just have the note, does anybody have any more detail?
Yeah, it's on, um, seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen point five.
I think Mike had something to add.
Yes, uh, I've been inspected, I went out there this afternoon, uh, that time. Uh, appears at all, when it applies, the title of the inspection, however, further looking into the matter, the. Play was still open today, I'll look into that tomorrow morning.
Okay, because we can't, well, the volume.
Yeah, it's still open right now, I understand.
And then, I mean, what, seventeen point five?
Yep.
What, what is the reason why you're into this one?
Uh. Yeah, that's the yellow area, which, oh.
Yeah.
It's an existing easement, presently, there's an easement between the two lots. And they're just getting it screened out, so. We're not in the easement, and I believe that. That the lot twenty-three, it's open contract, be sold, so, they're trying to get it.
Okay, so the, the reason for this to, they're, they're selling the half, the lot on.
Yeah, and that way the easement doesn't become an issue.
And, and the other lot, is, they're not planning on building on another lot or anything.
Yeah. No, no, there's, there's an existing building on both of my both lots, there's no, no proposed development at all at this point.
It's simply moving on, I wish we could help you tonight. But we're, we're stuck, and there's a violation.
Right, I understand.
We can't even do a pending, so. It's not, it's nothing.
I, I hope, I told you, I.
It's moving lot, lot, so, it's moving lot, lot, kind of stuff.
Okay, alright, and the end, sorry, maybe you, this evening. It's been a long time since we've been planning. You, you remind me why I recite it. So you're gonna check on that tomorrow, today, contact me. Or, yes, okay, yeah, God only. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And to come in and. Enjoy yourself.
Yeah, it's all screened out, we'll, we'll be put on your next, next agenda. I may make the request, okay, very good, thank you. Request that you, early in the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I know.
The people just by that side.
It's a little major, that's how it's going to be a story, lots of them are telling about.
In that case, we, we run out of things to talk about, good.
Yeah, you, you mentioned, said, we're not all.
Yes.
Our experience, three nothing now.